This is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and the time is 7:35 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Linda, can we have the roll call?
Kiefahfer.
Here.
Haven.
Here.
Ruhl.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina. Here. All right, do we have approval of the agenda as presented or any amendments that need to happen?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Kiefahfer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing on our Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading through the list. A, approval of the council work session slash special meeting and agenda minutes for May 27th, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure list for June 10th, 2025. C, approval of a change in corporation structure for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Campestra Mexican Restaurant LLC located at 1430 East Main Street, Unit 6, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for a tavern liquor license for Cortez Elks Lodge 1789, Inc., DBA Cortez Elks 1789 located at 2100 North Dolores Cortez. E, approval of a change in corporate structure and a renewal application for an arts liquor license for the Cortez Cultural Center, Inc., DBA Cortez Cultural Center located at 25 North Market Street, Cortez. F, approval of a renewal application on a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Good To Go Stores LLC, DBA Good To Go located at 717 South Broadway, Cortez. G, approval of a renewal application on a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Good To Go Stores LLC, DBA Good To Go located at 302 West Main Street, Cortez. H, approval of a renewal application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for La Casita de Cortez LLC, DBA La Casita de Cortez located at 332 East Main Street, Cortez. And I, approval of a transfer of ownership application on a retail marijuana store slash retail marijuana cultivation facility for THA Corporation, DBA The Herbal Alternative, located at 1530 Lebanon Road, Cortez. Would anyone like to see an item removed for discussion?
I move that council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by DeHaven.
Lewis.
Aye.
KieHaven.
Aye.
Randall. Kiefahfer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers may have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Thank you, Rachel. All right, I would like to invite Susan up to the podium. Great. And then just make sure to turn the microphone on before you start, it doesn't look green yet. Perfect.
Susan, can I just find one more thing? This quick?
Okay, perfect.
Oh, there it goes. I just wanted to comment on the work that they did on the intersection at Third on South Broadway where they had the school crossing thing. It's like we just changed the laws, we put in new speed limit signs, but we already had laws. And it's like, it doesn't do any good to make more laws when the laws aren't enforced. So, you know, what I see, and I've heard comments too, and seen comments, the same thing. It's like, these people are just racing through there and they race through that intersection even if the light's on. And it didn't change anything, all it did was make the people that actually follow the law to look and say, why, why do I have to go this slow now? So, I don't know what the solution is to that, but you might consider that when you're making more laws and regulations and stuff. Try enforcing the laws that you have first. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, I'd like to invite Mike Levy.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Mike Levy, 491 East Coronado Avenue in Cortez. I understand I only have three minutes to speak and I could speak volumes, but I understand this is the last city council meeting that Linda Smith will be our city clerk. And I just want to say how much I appreciated Linda's hard work and dedication over all the years and all the support and nurture nurturing she gave to me while I was on the council and mayor. She's, she's going to be very much missed, she's irreplaceable, but she's been mentoring wonderful gal Donna as a backup city clerk who will become a clerk, I hope, I'm sure. Anyway, I just wanted to present this bouquet of flowers and this card to Linda with your permission, and I just can't explain more how much I appreciate all the years that I've known Linda and how much she's done for the city. And I just want to thank her for all the years she's been here and congratulate her on the years, and I hope she has a wonderful retirement. We love you, Linda.
All right, I'd like to invite Karen Sheik up.
Well, good evening, Mayor Medina and City Council. My name is Karen Sheik and I live at 1100 Bluffs Boulevard. And I too am here this evening because it's my understanding that this is Linda's last city council meeting as mayor, she's not retiring, I understand, until July, but moving forward, somebody else will be attending city council meetings and taking the minutes. I had the great good fortune to serve on city council for eight and a half years and during that time Linda was a wonderful mentor to me, she was helpful in every way possible, and I, I learned an awful lot about Linda. One of her jobs, I think, and she takes it very seriously, is to make sure that city council in their actions, that they adhere to the requirements of, of the offices and that they do what's right. During the time that I was on city council, we submitted a letter of nomination for Linda to be recognized as city clerk of the year for the state, and I had the great honor to be able to drive up with her and the then-city manager Shane Hale to be there when that award was, was made to Linda. In, in my letter that I wrote, I said, if there was a picture under customer service in Webster's Dictionary, you would find Linda's name there because that's one of the hallmarks of what she did in all the years that she worked for the city. She was caring, she was helpful, she always went out of her way to do what she could in order to make sure that citizens in our community, that their needs were addressed, and if there was any way that she could help them, she was more than happy to do that. I remember in one city election, one of our older citizens returned the ballot without having signed it. And Linda made, took the special effort to actually visit that citizen's home to get the signature so that his ballot was counted. That's service above and beyond the call of duty. So, Linda, I, I know you're a little hesitant to accept these accolades, but on behalf of the city of Cortez, I would like to thank you for your service and to tell you you're going to be greatly missed. Both you and your husband Rick have given literally decades of your lives in the service of the city and our community is the better for it. So, thank you so much, and success in your retirement.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to provide a public comment on anything not in our public hearing section of the agenda? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll be honoring Linda throughout the night, so don't worry. We'll move on to number four on our agenda. Four is a, 4A is a presentation on Class III Cultural Resource Survey of Carpenter and Gear Natural Area presented by Ryan Spitler.
Mayor Medina, my name is Ryan Spitler. I'm an archaeologist with Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants here in Cortez, Colorado. And I'd just like to thank you for giving me some time this evening to present on a certified local government grant project that I worked on for the city over this past fall and, which also carried through into this past winter. So, to kind of just go over a little bit of background here, interest in the project really began in late 2023, and during that time, there was some, some concern that, that archaeological sites were potentially being impacted within the Carpenter and Gear natural areas. And some folks presented their concerns to the Cortez Historic Preservation Board, and they came to find out that these natural areas had, had never been systematically surveyed for any archaeological sites. The, the company that I worked for, Woods Canyon, actually did a very brief survey of the Carpenter Natural Area, I believe in 1993, when it was transferred to the city. However, that, that project report was, was fairly limited and, and nothing was actually submitted in terms of site files to the state. So, so the Cortez Historic Preservation Board decided in early 2024 to pursue a certified local government grant with funding from the state, and this was in January 2024. Fast forward to the summer of 2024, you yourselves, the council, reviewed, I believe there were two bids, and you had selected Woods Canyon to carry out the grant. And then I was out there in September of 2024, and then finally, this past April, I was able to submit the final report. Since then, I've had a, a meeting with, with various city staff to go over preservation and potential management plans to, to oversee these, these resources, and to kind of go over some plans for how to manage these sites going into the future, say for, for whenever there's any type of infrastructure or any project that might go through this area that could potentially impact the sites, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So, this is going to be fairly brief, considering all that I found. However, I, I ended up documenting 13 archaeological sites. Out of these 13 sites, 10 of them, I'm sorry, there were 10 prehistoric components identified and six historic components. Six of these sites were recommended for the National Register of Historic Places, and that, that basically means that they're either associated with an important event in history, an important person in history, an important design style, say, and, and construction style of a building, for instance, or they have data potential, or they're, they're essentially, there's more information to be learned at the site. So, so six of these 13 sites kind of were elevated to a status where they are considered a bit more important, where they, you know, they're considered of a, of a greater historic value. Additionally, I documented seven isolated finds, and, and this basically just means that they were single artifacts that really didn't meet the criteria to be considered a site. And none of those isolated finds were recommended as eligible to the National Register. So, out of the prehistoric sites, I, I came across mostly sites that, that just had, you know, a lot of undateable material. There, there was really nothing that you could say other than that it was kind of this broad prehistoric timeframe. There, there were a few that dated to the ancestral Puebloan periods, particularly one during the early Pueblo II period. And these are just some examples, they're a little fuzzy and out of focus on the screen there, but just some examples of different artifacts that I came across. The photo in the upper right there is two little pieces of flaked obsidian, and, and the interesting thing about obsidian is, is there are no local sources for obsidian in this area, so what that tells us is that that was, that was brought in through trade or, or folks coming in from a different region. And, and in terms of the prehistoric site types, you know, we had one limited activity area where it was just very brief, there was a lithic reduction area where they're, you know, making stone tools such as arrowheads or knives, but, but the vast majority were, were kind of seasonal camps. So, so they might have been there periodically through the year, but not the whole year, and potentially even multiple times through the year. And these camps would have been used as hunting camps, resource gathering, resource processing, like grinding different vegetal materials and the such. In terms of the historic sites, you know, I also had kind of a broad, several broad date ranges for these sites. There, there was one that dated as far back as the 1890s, and, and then there are several that, that kind of span all the way up into the, the very early 70s. And, and one thing that we use to define archaeological sites, one of the criteria we use is that it at least has to be 50 years old to be considered an archaeological resource. So, that's why, you know, you see things kind of teetering on the, the 70s at this point. And additionally, there was one site that dated to 1939 to 1941, which was a civilian conservation corpse camp here in Cortez, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit. And, and again, some of these photos here are just examples of different historic era artifacts that I came across, you know, you just see a lot of bottle bases, ceramic fragments, old rusty cans. However, they, they do hold a lot, a lot of value in terms of learning about, you know, the occupations of our city and our county in the past. So, overall, like I said, there was one civilian conservation's core camp that I came across some remains of. Other historic sites that were of note were just some, some simple kind of trash scattered dumps from, probably from some homesteads in the area, people coming out and just getting rid of their trash. There was the remains of a historic habitation. There was actually a small family cemetery plot out there, and, and this is the site that dated to the, the 1890s. I believe it, that, that headstone there is dated 1896. And, and this individual is part of the Lupki family. And the, the interesting thing about the Lupkis is they were actually some of the first German settlers of Montezuma County, and they're known to have resided in what's called the German settlement just outside of Dolores. And there's some really good oral histories and accounts of, of these folks, and for some reason, they, they chose to have their family cemetery plot here, however, they did not live here. And I couldn't quite figure that out as to why that might have been. However, there are some good records about the family and about these, this particular individual that is, the headstone is pictured there. So, to give you just a little bit of a background about the civilian conservation court, you know, it's sometimes referred to more simply as just the CCC, and, and it was a national program that lasted from 1933 to 1942. And FDR, he, he intended to create the, the CCC due to the high unemployment rate during this time and during the Great Depression. You know, unemployment rate was 20, 25% during that time, and, and the government really thought that they, they had a responsibility to, to put young people to work, particularly young men aged 18 to 25. And, and believe it or not, there was actually a CCC camp along the northern edge of the city limits from 39 to 41. And, and this camp was a soil conservation camp, and, and what that means is, you know, they, they worked on various projects throughout, not only Montezuma County, but in Dolores County, and, and some parts of San Miguel County. They mostly worked on private land, however, they also worked a bit on, on our national forests and, and various public lands around here. And, and they were really, you know, trying to help out soil, or stop soil erosion and, and help with water retention in our soils. So, you know, they, they worked on hundreds of projects throughout our, our county. They actually, they, they actually partnered with the city to, to work on various city projects when they had downtime due to weather or various other factors. I found sources that, that said that they, they helped gravel large stretches of Chestnut Street from, from the intersection of Main all the way north. They also gravelled a portion of Main Street in front of the courthouse. So, there, you know, they had, they had quite a big impact on, on our county, even though, you know, it, it might not be as tangible or visible to, to a lot of people today. And, and this is one of the, the better photographs that I came across, and again, I apologize, it's a little blurred out on the, the television screen up above, but the, the photo on the bottom there is a panoramic view of, of the camp, and there would have been upwards of 200 enrollees at this, at this camp here in Cortez. And, and kind of on the right-hand side there, you can see Park Point, and the La Plata's are kind of in the clouds in the background. And Cortez at this point, you know, it was a totally different place, it, there was only about 1,800 people at that time, so a camp this size of 200 people must have made quite the presence in the population of Cortez. Pictured in the middle are all 200 or so enrollees. That, that photo on the top left is actually a side camp that was stationed somewhere near, I, I don't know if it's near Goinip Canyon, I suppose, but the loc, the exact location of that camp is a little unclear to me. The, the top right there is a, another side camp, which is titled the Dove Creek Side Camp, and I've found sources that state that it's about five miles south of Dove Creek. Again, I, I have not spent the time to actually track down that, that exact location of that particular camp. And what also makes this individual image pretty interesting is, up there in the, the top center is a list of, of all the, the people associated with the camp during this time. And this image was, was created in September 1940. So, it's a, it, it gives you a pretty good snapshot of, of what things looked like right, right about in the middle of, of the camp's occupation. And I was fortunate enough to be able to use the 1940s census data to track down some additional information about this camp since the camp was occupied over the year 1940, which led me to find a, a, a pretty detailed map of the general location of the camp and, and some further kind of demographic information about individuals at the camp. So, obviously, that camp is not here today. The, the camp is actually, has been mostly dismantled. I believe it was in 1942, all of the buildings were transferred to the War Department. The, the entire national CCC program was actually shut down by Congress due to the US's involvement in World War II. So, they, they started pulling funds away from the CCC and other programs and... And this particular camp, all the buildings were moved away. And really, I have an aerial photograph from the mid-1950s. And you can't see any trace of the camp from the sky at that point, you know, it's long gone. And by the late 1950s, a residential neighborhood has been erected in this area. So the camp, the core of the camp itself is essentially no longer here. However, I did come across large areas of the camp's trash, basically, and displaced structural materials from the buildings. And there is some valuable information that I found in the trash. So pictured in the upper right there, you know, that's just a pretty dense concentration of cans and coal and clinker. You know, most of the artifacts, or I'm sorry, the trash during the occupation of the camp was burned. However, cans do not burn easily. So it seems to me that they were taking a lot of their trash kind of off of the core of the camp on the outskirts and just dumping it there outside of the camp. So we still have a lot that we can learn from this. The photograph in the top middle there is actually the handle of a mess hall knife. And then it's made of aluminum, so it hasn't rusted over the years. And it's stamped with a U.S. And it's actually stamped also with the date 1918. And that 1918 originally was a little confusing to me. However, I've come to realize that it was fairly common for CCC camps to use World War I surplus items within these camps. So that's how this kind of earlier knife made its way into this camp. Now, it would have had a steel blade, which probably broke. And then that's why it was discarded into the trash area. And any other remnant of it is probably just rusted away. So that's why you don't have the blade. And these are just some other artifacts that I found. The only other, maybe more interesting artifact that I came across is this Tepco dinnerware plate. And the interesting thing about Tepco is they were known to have huge government contracts back in the 1930s, 40s, 50s. You know, a lot to do with military contracts. And they were supplying the military and the government these kind of very generic white tablewares. So this particular item ended up there that way. So moving on to where I'm at with my talks with the city more recently, back in early May, you know, we talked about the importance of preservation when possible. And there's really six sites that are of higher importance out there. And under best-case scenario circumstances, you know, I've kind of made recommendations to just broadly avoid these sites whenever possible. However, I understand that that is probably not going to be the case under many instances, because there are buried water lines, sewer lines. There is a power line, as you can see in that photo there. So there's already existing infrastructure. So it's really going to come down to a case-by-case kind of basis about how to manage these sites and trying to find the best-case scenario of how to lessen the impact to these sites when any type of construction or work may occur. And since this area is also within the Carpenter and Gear Natural Areas, which is known to be a very popular recreation area, you know, there's about 15 miles of trail out there. I also recommended that the city, you know, periodically go out there and just have somebody check up on these sites to make sure that the recreation itself is not impacting them in any negative ways, maybe in terms of vandalism or looting or collecting artifacts. And ultimately, you know, I didn't provide any specific site locations in this public presentation. And really, folks in the city should try to limit specific site location information when possible. Obviously, that's impossible to limit it completely. So it's more on a need-to-know basis in order to protect these sensitive archaeological sites. I'd just like to take a moment to highlight some folks that have been a part of the project all along the way, particularly Scott Baker and Helen West. And Helen actually is watching or babysitting my two kids right now, thankfully. So I really appreciate her. So, once I leave here, we got to switch places, because I believe she has some work to do tonight as well. So props to Helen. And Linda Toll of the Cortez Historic Preservation Board has really been kind of the backbone of this project from the Preservation Board in the city side. She's the one who helped write the grant in the first place. I will say that the board had pursued an additional grant for this year to focus on more research and more work with the civilian conservation corps camp. The state had recommended the city for additional funding for this project. However, at this time, funding is kind of locked up. So I don't think it's going to ever be released, or, you know, this year, unfortunately. And then Lindsay and Eric from History Colorado, they have been in charge in managing the grant from the state side. The Montezuma Heritage Museum has been incredibly helpful through my research and going through their archives, particularly Liz and Barbara, who are over there. They've helped me on numerous occasions. On the last day of May here, I was over there giving a presentation just solely about the civilian conservation corps camp as part of Historic Preservation Month. And there was a packed room and a lot of interest from our community. So I was really glad to see that there was so much, you know, interest from folks around town and from our county. And I'd just like to, you know, say thank you to my coworkers at Woods. You know, I didn't do this project alone. And to council here as well for, you know, for selecting Woods Canyon to carry out this grant, you know. Just very appreciative, and it's been a pleasure to carry out this work. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Do we have any questions for? Really cool to learn about the history of our city and in particular, that natural area. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I was wondering if you're available to do that civilian conserv, CCC program in other venues for other nonprofits that would be interested.
All right, we'll let you talk offline, so, thank you. Yeah, so, audience was asking if that presentation could happen in other venues to a broader public. So, thanks, yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to 4B on our agenda, Mesa Verde National Park, Navajo Hill Water Tank Project, presented by City Manager Drew Sanders.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm waiting for my presentation to come up here on your screen. But while we're waiting for you to, for that to occur, so Mesa Verde National Park contacted us via email and requested through History Colorado, or the suggestion of History Colorado, that they get a comment from our city council on a new water tank project they've got going up there. They currently have a water tank, but I guess it's aged and needs to be replaced. And so their new plan is to put another new tank literally next to that, get the water flowing using that, and then they would refurbish or replace the old tank. So, the impact upon the city of Cortez is that possibly it can be seen, although I've looked at it up there for quite a while and actually tried to look at it with a pair of field glasses, I cannot see the old one. And also, the new one would be painted green, which I think the current one is also. So, they're just, they gave some maps here, and there we go. They gave some maps here, and I apologize, Council, that these are not larger, but this is kind of an overview. They were not able to provide us any better maps than this, but this gives the general area. And I'll move to the second one that points out where those tanks are and the impacted areas would be in orange. So, again, from the city of Cortez, unless you have a very trained eye somehow, I'm not sure that we would see it up there on Navajo Hill. But we do need to get council comment on that, so we can respond back.
I don't have any concerns.
I guess just that I appreciate they're going to paint it, you know, a color to blend more in with the landscape.
I agree with the color issue and with the availability of seeing it from here. I don't really see how that can happen. The only thing I had a question about was that they said that a communications tower is going to be placed on top of the tank. I'm assuming that's a small one, not anything that we're going to be able to see. I'm going to assume that, it doesn't seem.
Yeah, they didn't expand on that, but generally, those are, when they put it up there, they're not huge at all. And oftentimes, they're kind of off to the side. They're at the crown and then off to the side. And oftentimes, they're just radio for them and probably our dispatch center here, and then South Fellers oftentimes.
I don't have any problem with it. I appreciate the fact that they've asked us, I think that was very nice of them.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I think being in that similar location, it doesn't affect our view whatsoever.
Yeah, I would also say that it was nice of them to ask. Mesa Verde is a really great neighbor, brings lots of tourism to Cortez. And the fact that we won't be able to see it, I think is kind of, makes it a non-issue. However, I'm glad that they were nice enough to ask.
Okay, thank you, Council. I will respond back to them.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to 5 on our agenda, public hearings. 5A is a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for La Catrina Bar and Grill. This will be presented by Linda Smith, or City Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, we have a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for La Catrina Bar and Grill. The applicant is not here. I've tried to reach out to him, I haven't been able to get ahold of him, so I'm not real sure what happened for him to be here tonight. But I do have his application, I mean, his application's in your packet, and along with his petition that was also included. But we are going to have a report from the Police Department on the request. And I do believe Andy can tell who did that petition, et cetera. So I'm going to swear, Andy, in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, under penalty of law, that the testimony that you will give before this council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The following is the facts that I know of. Rachel Medina, Rachel Marbanks, excuse me, with the Cortez Planning and Zoning Office was contacted and indicated that the zoning regulations do allow for a hotel/restaurant liquor license permit use. Public notice was given by posting a proper sign on May 9, 2025, on the property described in the application. A photo of the public notice is attached to this report. Required notices were published in the Journal on May 28, 2025. There is a like business in the area with the same liquor license. A poll of surrounding neighborhoods and businesses within the neighborhood were taken to obtain an opinion on granting this liquor license as applied for by the applicant. All persons contacted were advised of the time and place of a public hearing and were asked, "Do you have an opinion on the liquor license being granted?" Of that, 38 were in favor and two were opposed. The location complies with the Colorado Liquor Code rules and regulations. The location does not create any known public safety issues or dangers of public health. And you have a copy, a copy of this report was delivered to the applicant on May 29. Are there any questions?
I guess I have a basic question, it's probably for Linda. Does the applicant have to be here for us to move forward?
They do not. We have the information, and the public hearing has been advertised. It's good for him to come to tell you what he's going to do, and I'm not real sure why he didn't make it. But he does have his sign posted on his building, as required. Chevallo has completed all the fingerprint background checks, and they are on file with the state and with us. So, it's not required that he comes. I wish he would have, but I'm sorry that he isn't. The hotel and restaurant liquor license would be issued for the premise at 220 East Main Street. So I wanted to make sure, I know last time we had a different address, so I wanted to make sure that we knew it was for 220. West, are you sure it's west? Okay. Yes, okay, it's West Main Street. We're confused on whether it's west or east, so I apologize for that.
It looks like west, next to Bennys.
Yeah, it's next to Bennys. So, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I can go ahead and open this, the public hearing portion of this. So if anyone from the public would like to speak for or against, or have just any general comments about this application. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any questions, Council?
No, no questions. It appears that they've met all the requirements. So I think they've done everything that Council has asked for.
I move that after considering the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants, and the necessity of any restrictions on the license, the good character of the applicant, and the compliance with all provisions of Colorado Revised Statutes 44-3-301, that Council approve a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at La Catrina Bar and Grill LLC DBA La Catrina Bar and Grill to be located at 220 West Main Street, Cortez.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Lewis.
Randall.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Heffer.
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to 5B on our agenda, ordinance number 1338, series 2025. We will consider approving a second reading on ordinance number 1338, series 2025, an ordinance approving 7 West First Street for historic designation and to conclude this property in the City Registry of Historic Resources, presented by Rachel Marchbanks, our community and economic development director.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. I am filling in for Helen West. She might, she will probably be here shortly, if you have any questions. We had a first reading last council meeting. But the owners of, let's see. The owners of 7 West First Street have applied for a historic preservation board, applied to the Historic Preservation Board to have the building listed on the City Register of Historic Places. You can see the location here on the map. Listing a resource on the City Register does not restrict the property owner's ability to change, alter, or demolish the resource. Resources that are altered beyond their defining historic features may be removed from the city register. Resources listed on the City Register may be eligible for state historic preservation tax credits and grant funding through the State Historical Fund. So the board unanimously voted to recommend the building at 7 West First Street to be designated as historic research and included in the City Register based on the cultural criteria outlined in Chapter 7, Section 4.1.2b of the Cortez Land Use Code. And I will go over that with you as well. They felt that the building's cultural significance comes from being associated with both important events and activities and important persons in the area's history. The building was built for the New Mexico Lumber Company and is The building was built for the New Mexico Lumber Company and is a McPhee home and was moved from McPhee, Colorado between nineteen forty-seven and nineteen fifty-seven to its current location at seven West First Street. The home was owned for many years by the McEwen family, a prominent family in the history of Cortez. Although the building has been altered from its original appearance, the board felt it met the overall criteria for local historic designation and further determined that the following features were significant and should be preserved to maintain the building's historic significance. And those features were, or significance were the building's current location and general footprint, the general square footage and single-story architecture of the building. So... I think I hear doors coming, doors opening, but here, here is the location of the site. And... Step in, she'll, she'll take it from here.
Cool, thank you counsel and apologies for that. So yes, so there's the location of seven West First Street. And you'll notice that that entire property is actually a little bit bigger parcel. However, the building that is up for historic designation is really only one building on a larger property parcel. So just as a reminder, this is from our new land use code, which didn't change that much, and I'm just gonna move this briefly. But standards for designation include that you need to consider the structure, that it is at least fifty years old, which it is. And it meets one of the following criteria in the categories of architectural, cultural, or geographic slash environmental significance. A structure, of course, can be exempted by the age in the standard if it fits that it's like exceptional. And so the, the application claims that it is both culturally significant and also has some historic architecture features. As I'm not, I think Rachel mentioned, but this is a historic McPhee home, so it fits that kind of history and culture of Cortez in the area. So although it was not located in the original location, it was moved to that spot and has remained there ever since. So as I was just saying, it fits this criterion, chapter seven, section four, because it was built for the New Mexico Lumber Company, has again that McPhee home, and moved from McPhee, Colorado to where it sits today between nineteen forty-seven to nineteen fifty-seven, probably in the early portion of that period, but we're not, it's hard to find records on that. And it's been owned, it was also owned for many years by the McEwen family, which is a prominent old family from the history of Cortez. And then the other criteria that you need to think about as you're determining this is that it retains, the structure retains some of the original design features, materials, and/or character. It's in the original location or same historic context if it has been moved and has been, or it has been accurately reconstructed and restored. And the historic preservation board, along with the application, felt that it met the first of those two criteria. So even though it was moved, it has that same historic context. There are several McPhee homes in that area. So again, it's, the current location is historic. And the general footprint of the building, while there has been an ADA compliant, I think it's compliant, actually, I don't know. So up at a ramp up to the front entrance of the building, it retains the general square footage, the general footprint, the single-story architecture of the McPhee homes of the time. This is a picture from around nineteen sixty. So you can see it's still again with some changes. This is taken from a couple weeks ago, so it does look a little different, but still retains that kind of historic feature, although some modifications have been made. I will also remind you that there are three different levels of historic designation. We are looking at the local level. The other two would be for the state historic and then the national, which is the most restrictive. I think, any questions? Is that the next thing? Mayor, is that questions?
Sorry, my mic isn't on. Do we have the property owner here?
I don't believe so. I think they, I think they live in Denver.
Okay. Any questions from counsel before I open up the public hearing portion? Okay, we'll open this up for the public hearing if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to comment about this potential designation. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any further discussion or?
No, I, I would just like to mention that I, I appreciate all the documentation that was supplied to counsel. And after reading the... They, they approved this, so I, I think we should be moving forward on that. If, if there are no other comments, I'll make a motion. I move that counsel approve on second and final reading ordinance number thirteen thirty-eight, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving seven West First Street for historical designation and to include this property on the city register of historic resources.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Spruell.
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruell.
Yes.
He Foffer.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to five C on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen thirty-nine, series twenty twenty-five. Counsel consider approving on second reading of ordinance number thirteen thirty-nine, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on all call, applications for marijuana business licenses and permits, presented by Patrick Coleman.
Thank you, madam mayor. If you'll recall, there was some discussion about whether or not the city regulations as currently drafted would allow for an additional marijuana facility. Currently, we have seven that are licensed. And when the regulations were first drafted, the thought was that perhaps four would be able to be licensed based on the distance requirements. As you can see, obviously, the, the current license holders were able to find locations that would meet the distance requirements and all other requirements and obtain a license. There was some perhaps discussion about whether or not another license or, or other licenses might be attempted to be obtained. And the thought was whether or not the city should improve its regulations or, or adopt regu- additional regulations that would limit the number of licensees. And the idea was that in order to review those potential regulations and determine whether or not additional regulations are needed, perhaps a moratorium of six months might be appropriate to allow staff, the city, and the public to discuss the issue. This moratorium doesn't mandate that you adopt new regulations. It just gives you the opportunity to discuss that issue without somebody forcing your hand by coming in and submitting an application. And again, staff in conjunction with the GIS department will probably need to do some investigation to determine if in fact another license would be available based on the distance requirements that are currently in the code. So that, that would certainly be part of the discussion. But with that in mind, it, it's... The ordinance as it currently states just says that you will have six months from the effective date of the ordinance to research and discuss whether additional regulations are necessary and what form those regulations might take. Unless you have any questions, it is a public hearing on second reading, so I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Does counsel wanna get, so it's a public comment before we kind of have our discussion? Okay. Well, so we'll open this up. It's a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of the subject, please come to the podium. Oh, make sure the microphone's on.
I'm mom of the Doobie Sisters. We had a couple questions. I appreciate it both ways of licensing. Clarification on if it, it includes a future consumption lounge, those kind of licenses. Like we would, we're kind of waiting for that and that would be beneficial to our business as things have slowed down. Just a question.
Okay.
And another question?
Hi, counsel and mayor Medina. I'm Corinne Wolf. Do I have to say my address? I'm thirty, West Monizuma. I appreciate the thought and I think that this could have saved the city a lot of trouble a few years ago. My concern and what I would ask you to consider in updating our laws, the state updates our laws like once a year at least, is the consumption model like mom mentioned. We have a large tourism for cannabis here. And people ask where they can use it and the answer is nowhere, really, legally. So I think that considering that when you're redoing these rules, if you redo these rules, would be beneficial to everybody in the community.
Anyone else in the audience who'd like to, to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion and then... Go ahead, anyone who wants to start?
I, I mentioned this at first reading that I'm, I'm opposed to this because I, I think we're singling out the marijuana shops. In my point of view, we have way too many establishments selling alcohol and we're not putting a moratorium on, on licenses there. And as I mentioned before, I, I know we're looking at other issues, but, but the biggest thing is the supply, the demand on this has gone way, way down. If, if we look at tax revenues that we generate from this, it's, it's down substantially. So I do not approve this.
So the ladies had a question and it, we really don't have a bantering thing back and forth that I can answer their question for you. No, you could not do that be, if we put this new moratorium in because it says all marijuana-related business. I, I read one of the things in the ordinance says, whereas the city also finds and determines that the subject regulations concerning number of marijuana businesses are necessary to the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare. And this ordinance should therefore become effective upon adoption on second reading. I haven't heard anything at all about how they came up with it. It is a public health issue. The state voted for it. The state said they, it's fine. And therefore, I, I don't think that the city should say that it is not and as they can prove it.
Madam mayor, perhaps I could add a little to that discussion. That language is more or less boilerplate for moratoriums because you have to justify the reason for limiting the public's right to submit applications for whatever period of time the moratorium is in place. And so that's kind of a catch-all phrase that moratorium ordinances use to justify putting the, the, the limit in place pending discussions about what amendments to the regulations are necessary. And in response to the members of the public, their question is, yeah, the, the moratorium as it's currently written would apply to the facilities that they were mentioning as well. Again, for the, the term of the moratorium, which is currently stated as six months. But it, it would allow the city to look at changes to the current regulations that might facilitate the types of facilities that they are discussing there. But, but as it states, they, they couldn't come in with an application currently.
Yeah, I guess I, I want to clear up some confusion. The, the moratorium is like if we're gonna evaluate the law, the rules we have in place and we're gonna potentially change them. A moratorium protects us so that if an application comes in while we're actively changing rules, it's not unfair to have like an applicant start and then the rules change on the midstream. So this, a moratorium is really just to like pause things. And we can do this for any, any instance. We could do it for any kind of land application. So it's not necessarily that we're treating like marijuana shops differently. It's just this particular process where we're, we're considering pausing, you know, new applications coming in so we can evaluate our rules and potentially add, add things or, or change them. Because I think the other things we need to consider is how we measure distance. I think there were other concerns with like our current rules. So I guess the question for you, Pat, is like, if, if we are gonna have these discussions and potentially consider onsite consumption, which is allowed now in our state, would we need to pause on applications while we do that? And is that best practice?
Well, our, our current regulations, I don't believe directly address the onsite consumption issue. So if, if in fact counsel wants to adopt more detailed regulations that address that specific issue, then we would want to get those regulations in place prior to someone submitting an application. Because if they submit an application, they're subject to the regulations in existence at the time they submitted the application. So despite your best efforts to try to amend the regulations, a, an applicant that comes in ahead of the finalization of your amendments would not be subject to those amendments.
Counsel, if that is the case, what about the people who already have the license?
Well, their, their licenses, as I understand it, do not include the onsite consumption. And so we would be looking at different regulations because when those licenses were issued, I don't think the onsite consumption was possible.
Right, so I, I think my point being is that those who hold licenses, if we make a regulation change, they would be incorporated into the new regulations, correct? And anyone applying at that time would also be incorporated into the, be subject to the new regulations? Like if, if we said we're going to allow consumption locations and there was no separate designation for that other than that we're going to allow it, then those who have licenses now could have consumption or could allow consumption. And those who would be applying could allow consumption. Is that a, is that too simplified?
Well, and, and we would want to make sure our regulations distinguish between the types of licenses so that the current limitation, which we believe may be limited to seven retail facilities, that if you wanted to allow onsite consumption, that they could locate as many as they wanted, depending on what distance requirements you put in place for the onsite consumption. And that, that could be different than the retail facilities so that you, you might have seven retail and ten onsite consumption. Or you might limit it to only five or something like that for the onsite consumption. But they, they would, there would be a separate application process and a separate license issued.
Just, just to clarify for the community, onsite consumption is currently prohibited by Cortez because there is not a license, correct?
Correct.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't require... So we wouldn't, we wouldn't require this moratorium to address that because it is already prohibited. And we could, we could address and create policy and regulation around that at any time without, without this moratorium, correct?
The, the moratorium applies to any licenses or permits for marijuana businesses. So it would also limit the applications for onsite consumption until after the moratorium expires.
But there is no, it's already regulated to not allow onsite consumption. So this moratorium doesn't affect that one way or the other.
And, and so, you know, I, I guess if, whether you impose the moratorium or not, if, if the desire is to allow onsite consumption, then the, the city should begin the process of amending its code to allow for onsite consumption and, and come up with the rules that would regulate those applications. And again, yeah, you, you probably won't get applications currently because the current code does not allow for onsite consumption.
Okay, so yeah, we're not worried about like applications coming in right now because it's not allowed. So I guess the question on the table is, do we need a moratorium to discuss and potentially adopt rules around that, that specific?
I, I don't think you need it, but the way the language is currently written, it is fairly broad and it applies to all permits and licenses for marijuana businesses, which would also include onsite consumption.
Right, like we wouldn't need to pause the other part of a, of marijuana retail to, and like introduce potentially onsite consumption. Would we need a moratorium though if we were to change the rules on how we measure distances for existing, for the type of licenses we already allow?
Well, like I said, if, if, if you want to change the code, then the, the very nature of the ordinance process requires a first reading and a second reading and obviously staff has to prepare the ordinance. So you're, you're probably looking at, you know, maybe a couple of months without a moratorium. And if somebody wanted to apply for a retail operation, they would be subject to the current code so long as they submitted their application prior to the effective date of any code update that you, you imposed.
I mean, but that, that's the case with any, any regulation is that it, the current regulation's in place until, until we put new regulation in place.
Correct.
To me, I don't, I don't think it rises to the public safety, the, the public safety part mentioned in, in the ordinance. While I certainly would be open to, to tweaking some things in our existing code, I think particularly around what the mayor mentioned around clarifying how we measure distance, maybe looking at the distances that we're using. I think signage, more regulation around signage would be a thing to look at. I, I don't think that we, I don't think that we need a moratorium to do that. I think we can move forward and look at, look at our code without that.
I have a question that's related but not exactly in this. It's come up a couple of times now about the distances, about the distances and our, our ability to measure distances with our current GIS system. And so one of the questions that's come up previously is how many more stores could actually occur just on the retail side based on the new technology with the GIS measurements? And I think my question has to do with how long would it take? Because that's, that's one thing that's been outstanding over and over again. How long would it take for our current technology to determine that? I mean, would it take a day or would it take three weeks or how long will it take us to do this?
And I guess I'm not an expert on GIS technology and perhaps the, the mayor or the city manager might have a, a better answer for that question. But yeah, it, it's probably, if, if you directed us to do that research, I don't think it takes us more than a week to find that out.
Yeah, because I think it, it depends on how good the data is and you're going to have to do kind of a manual process. I would say it'd take more than a, a day, probably a few weeks, just to kind of get a broad sense and then tease out the details.
So along those lines, if I may, I, I agree with Councilmember Dobree. I'm not sure this rises, in fact, I, I, I am opposed to this rising to the level of a moratorium on further applications. And I don't agree with the background as it's stated in here that says it's urgent and necessary to preserve the status quo and to go through the methods for further limiting the number of marijuana businesses licenses. That's not our job. It is our job to address issues that have been brought up, I think, with the signage, the consumption issue, those sort of things should come into play. But it's not our job to put a moratorium on this. So I, I would like to ask council or, or the city mayor or whomever, what's a more reasonable way for us to go about this? And my first thought is that it's going to be that we just start looking at these rules that we want to address and do it in a rapid fashion. And at the same time, if the GIS mapping is of import to someone, that the city designate some resources to get that to us in as short a period of time as possible.
Yeah, I guess I, I want to add, like whether we, we pass a moratorium or not, I want to explore these ideas. Like the two, the two different topics of like looking at the current rules we have and then considering onsite consumption, which is a new addition.
Yeah, I'm just hearing and I agree that it seems like the moratorium may not be an effective way to go about necessarily getting to the, into the weeds with our codes and this onsite consumption that the business owners have brought up. So I think it would be better if we just made this a priority to go through and address some of these issues now that it has, there, it has been some time. And I don't think we necessarily need the moratorium.
Well, I, I guess, yeah, my mind is, is really blown. A few months ago, I, I just was asked the simple question whether or not it was possible for an eighth facility to be in the city of Cortez. And I went to staff and the answer was, we don't know. And then we came here and asked in the work session, the same exact question. The answer was, we don't know. Currently, the answer is, we don't know. And sort of the idea behind it was that, what I've really heard here tonight is that we don't have many solid answers around it. It sounds like there are more questions beyond that basic one question that I was asked several months ago. So I'm okay. I mean, it sounds like the majority of council would not like a moratorium. I will say that I question whether or not we will move forward on each one of these individual questions that has come up in an efficient manner. So having been on council for a very long time, I could see that this could take more than six months to answer some of these questions that I think are pretty fundamental that we as the city, I believe, should be able to answer. In part, so the dispensary owners that do exist are able to make business decisions. Do we stay open later? Do we reduce hours? Do we cut staff? Do we look at a different model like a consumption lounge? But until we answer some of those fundamental questions, I, I think they're kind of hamstrung. So I'm, I'm okay with a more, no moratorium. But I guess what I'd advocate is what are the steps that we're going to take moving forward to address all of these other issues, including distance and signage and all those things? And what does that look like? Because personally, and I hate to be negative about it, but I could see this really extending for a long time. And, and to be quite honest with you, I don't want another situation like we had with New View, to be honest. And I think that's an open question. I really do. If there's a spot in town and, you know, any kid with any knowledge of GIS could possibly figure out where there was one. So if we don't have that, those distance requirements updated and solid, then we could find ourselves very much in that same situation that we were with New View.
I, I guess the one thing I did want to highlight there is I don't know that it's the role of government to be providing intel on potential, and forget, forget about this being a marijuana business, but any business, whether a, a potential competitor could grow for that business. I think that's up to, that's up to those businesses to do that market research rather than the government to do that market research. I think, I think our role is to, is to find the, the best way to, to do what's best for our community. And I think it does sound like all of our council wants to, wants to look at, to look at our code. But yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to do them, I, I guess to go back, I don't think we need to do the moratorium. I think we can, we can look at the code. I think we should put it on a, a timeline. We, we're already planning on looking at the, at natural medicine. I think there, there are certainly some things that dovetail there around signage and hours and distances from things. I think, I, I don't know if we want to connect, I don't know if we want to piggyback those meetings, but we certainly could have very similar meetings to, to tweak our existing code around, around the marijuana businesses. On whatever timeline our council would like.
Yeah, well, I think we need the answers like for the questions that Matt and other people have been asking about the marijuana businesses to better inform the natural medicine discussion as well. So if we can get those, those answers, especially about distance and do the GIS work, that would, that would be helpful.
I agree. I thought about that as well. I think the process, the previous processes that we went through with marijuana and this current process of looking at code is very much going to inform the natural medicine discussion as we move forward. And that there are, in my opinion, definitely lessons learned or lessons to be learned that will be applicable to the natural medicine discussion.
Yeah, so like could we say the next, the first meeting in July, we have the GIS analysis of like how many more properties would be eligible for marijuana shops? And then present to us like how we currently measure distances? Because we're going to need to know how we measure distances for the natural medicine as well? And then what we currently regulate around signage? That's a month, so.
I might add to that, that I think it would be good for us to know what the current statuses of consumption lounges, kind of what the, what, bring us up to date on the, on any applicable rules and regulations that are happening around, kind of what the trend is for the state.
Okay, like what communities allow it and what they do?
What that looks like.
Okay.
Okay, Council, so I missed the last part from Councilmember Randall. So what's the, the fourth piece?
Consumption lounges.
Okay, consumption.
Data around consumption lounges. I, I don't know of another term. Is that the correct term?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Randall means like, you know, what, what are other communities doing? What does that look like across the state where it is happening, just to kind of start that conversation for us?
Okay, Council, if I understand right, then you want this by the first meeting in July?
Is that, is that enough time for those four?
Yeah, I would say some of this is. I think getting the, getting the GIS work done, I think is quite possible. We can definitely talk about how we measure distances. We can definitely talk about how we currently regulate signage. The consumption lounge piece, I think, is going to take a little bit longer. So if we could have a little more time on that. And I, I can't guarantee the end of July. We've got a lot of heavy lifts with, with natural medicine and other things going right now. I would, I would request time at least into August.
Do we need a motion on this because it's in front of us? We do.
To, well, to pass something, you do, but if no motion is made, then we move on.
Yeah, I guess either do a motion and, I mean, you can make a motion to not approve.
I move that council not approve on second and final reading ordinance number 13. An ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on all applications for marijuana business licenses and permits. Second.
Motion made by Spruell and seconded by Lewis.
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Spruell?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye. Alright, thank you for good conversation and we got a direction, so. Okay, we will move on to 5D on our agenda, ordinance number 1340, series 2025. Council will consider approving on second and final reading ordinance number 1340, series 2025. And an ordinance approving the amendment to the city manager's employment contract and fixing the city manager's compensation effective May 19th, 2025. Presented by Patrick Coleman, city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I mentioned during the first reading of this ordinance, the city charter mandates that any compensation fixed by council must be done so by ordinance. And we are interpreting that to mean that any adjustments to compensation for the city manager, the city attorney, and the judge would necessarily need an ordinance to approve an amendment to the contract. On first reading, you were presented with a contract amendment for Mr. Sanders that adjusts his compensation and the ordinance simply approves the contract. Pat, if you have any questions?
Alright, so our last meeting, council went into executive session to do our evaluation, our yearly evaluation of our city manager. And from that, he, we rated city manager Drew Sanders meets and exceeds expectations. I personally think you're doing a fantastic job. The city is, is the most responsive it's ever been, the most financially stable it's ever been. I think you're just doing a great job leading the staff and taking all the ideas and interests that we have and the policy and the direction and really pushing that forward. And I definitely see that. So I think we're recommending, we did a wage study and based on that wage study, you were underpaid and so we're putting you on to that step. Any other comments from council? Want to share their thoughts?
I would just second a lot of what you're saying. I think, I think our council as a whole, we certainly believe you're doing a great job and we appreciate your work. And, and also on the wage study, that was one of the specific tasks that council had given to you. I, it was probably a little over a year ago, so it was a little outside of this, outside of this review. But getting a, getting an actual wage scale that fits our community and fits our, basically fits our organization and has clear, clear steps along the way. We, we've had to, we've had to increase compensation for many of our employees over the last year as part of that to, to meet the market. And, and part of, part of meeting that, part of having that study done is to get real information about what we should be paying various roles in our organization. And, and it's important to get our city manager on that scale as well. So that's, that's what this represents.
Having said that, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion that council approve on second and final reading ordinance number 1340, series 2025. An ordinance approving the amendment to the city manager's employment contract and fixing the city manager's compensation at $186,191 effective May 19th, 2025.
Madam Mayor, you need a public comment.
Oh, it's a public hearing, oh, yeah, sorry. We're gonna, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, uh, public hearing, we'll open this up for a public hearing if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this topic. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of this, and then can we use the motion on the table, or?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Keef offer and seconded by Randall.
Spruul.
Yes.
Offer.
Aye.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall.
Lewis.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, uh, we are moving on to six on our agenda, unfinished business, there is none. So seven is new business. Seven A is necessity to request audit extension for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, presented by Drew Sanders, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, council, speaking of financial stability, we've had an instance occur that has, uh, is of concern to us, and we are coming to you tonight to request an extension on our audit. So as of March, or May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, our finance department was informed by our auditors, Atlas CPAs, that we would likely need to file an extension with the state of Colorado regarding the fact that we had not received audited financial statements from Mesa Verde Country, the tourism entity. For reference, Mesa Verde Country is considered under the, um, GASB, a component unit of the city that must be audited annually due to the amount of money that we pay them for tourism services. Currently, that amount ranges, depending on the amount of lodgers tax we receive each year, but generally between two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and three-hundred, and is capped at three-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars. But per the contract between the City of Cortez and Mesa Verde Country, they are to turn in their audited financial statements to us on or before April first of each year. That did not occur. And, um, since then, our finance department has been in touch with them, actually starting the first of the year, our, our finance department was in regular contact. We thought it was in progress. April first came by and went, and we still did not receive financial statements. And then as of the end of May, our auditing company says that they cannot get our audit completed. Everything for us is done, except for Mesa Verde Country, but they can often offer an opinion, or even if we were to receive those immediately, get that done by the June thirtieth deadline. Therefore, we need to request that, um, extension, and rightfully so. The state does not allow staff to submit that. It needs to go to our governing body, which is the proper way to do that. We are coming to you, requesting that the council authorize Mayor Medina to sign that extension. There's a little more to this. We, uh, as of this afternoon, late this afternoon, received finally some word from Mesa Verde Country that they're working on it and getting their, their documents in to get that audited. You know, I, I don't want to beat this too much, it is what it is right now. We're hoping to get this extension to September first, hoping that Mesa Verde Country follows through with their commitment, and that we're able to complete our audit in time based on the extension. So with that, council, I, uh, if you have any questions for me, please ask, otherwise I submit it to you for action.
So I know we, um, they've kind of had a history of this, and we were concerned about that, so when we made a new contract with Mesa Verde Country, we put a stipulation that if they didn't get their audits in in time, we would reduce their budget by fifty-thousand dollars. Would that be for the next year, or would that be this year?
If we were to act upon that, that would be for this year. Now, keep in mind, council, that when I put that in that contract, the intent was that that would be so high and so devastating that we would never come close to ever having to do that. We would just get our, you know, audit financial statements done. Unfortunately, that has not occurred, that is not, uh, the matter for tonight. But I will, I do plan to bring that matter to you late in July.
I, I think this is pretty straightforward. If we want to stay in audit compliance with the state of Colorado, we, we, we don't have a choice. So, you know, June thirtieth is coming up really quick, so I think we need to move ahead on this.
Okay, I just want to say one more comment. I just, I'm extremely disappointed that we're to this point, because we have worked extremely hard to get in good financial standing, and then to be back at this place where we have to ask for an extension and we can't meet the requirements. It's disappointing for the finance department, it's disappointing for the city and for the taxpayers, but it is what it is, so.
Yeah, I just had the, another one quick comment, you know, I really would like to see. During this reoccurring thing, I know this tonight we have to do, it's, it is what it is, but especially since we can use lodgers tax for wider, wider topics than tourism now with recent expansions of the, of the laws, I think it would be worth reevaluating.
Definitely.
Madam Mayor, I move that council. To be submitted to the state of Colorado.
Second.
A motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
He Haven.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll move on to seven D, or seven B on our agenda, letter of support request from Eric, a resident of Cor, City of Cortez, has requested a letter of support for his application to be a regional film liaison program coordinated by the Colorado Office Film, Television and Media, presented by Helen West, our community and economic development.
Thank you, council. So this is a pretty straightforward letter of support. The OEDIT Office of Economic Development and International Trade Division is the, as Mayor Medina said, was, is the Colorado Office of Film, Television and Media. This is a similar division to their, like, Colorado Tourism Office, or the Rural Opportunity Office, it's just another division of OEDIT. And the goal is to really increase economic development and economic activities through film and media productions throughout the state. Eric Kieros would like to apply to be a regional film liaison, an official film liaison, so he would coordinate between public agencies, possibly ourselves included, property owners, and film producers in the state. This does not have any direct financial gain for the city, other than potentially bringing more media productions here, but, you know, it's just kind of a thing. The closest film liaisons are in Durango and Telluride. As you guys know, Durango and Telluride is, are very different economies and, and frankly, very different scenery and film production opportunities than we have here in Monizuma County. So Eric would like to apply to be a regional film liaison, but he needs a letter of, from an elected official in order to be, to, to submit that application. And I do not think he is here tonight, but he does serve on our arts committee, he's been in film for many, many years, as you can see on the memo, and he also works for KSJD in the Sunflower Theater.
Yeah, I have to say, and a lot of people don't know this about Eric, is he actually was a child star in California. So he has a really long history with film and television, and recently he has decided on First Fridays to do Movies in the Park. And I went, and it was fantastic, and I was blown away, because it was the first one, and there were over a hundred people there, and it was like the coolest thing ever. And what's really impressive about this is that Eric, out of his own pocket, bought the blow-up screen to show the movie, and I think it was like ten thousand dollars. And it's because he cares about the community. Like, this guy's a, a good guy, and he's taking what he loves, and he's giving back to all of us in Cortez, so I, I think it's a great thing.
And just to add on to that, I agree, it, it was a really phenomenal event, I only came to the last section. I also just want to commend my boss, Rachel Marchbanks, Asia Lynn Hager, and our Parks and Rec Department, and of course, Beth Edson, our new library director. The library has really taken on that, because we needed a city sponsor for those movies, so just want to shout out to specifically those people and Heather Rowe, and the whole library services team. So thank you to them for helping put that incredible event together. The next one's August first. Bring your own popcorn and leave the dogs at home, please.
If there are no other comments, with great joy, I would like to make a motion, because I love Movies in the Park. Just kidding. I'd like to make a motion that council authorize Mayor Medina to sign the letter of support for Eric Kieros's application to the regional film liaisons program.
Second.
Motion made by Keef offer and seconded by Dobree.
Randall. He Haven.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to eight on our agenda, draft ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Uh, number nine, then, is city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, number ten, city manager report.
Yes, good evening, council, I do have a report for you this evening. Uh, to start with, the tentative dates for the upcoming natural medicine workshops are June seventeenth, from six to eight PM in this off, in this built room, as well as Tuesday, July fifteenth, six to eight PM, also in this room. Uh, I've heard from some council members, if I have not heard from you, yes or no, I would appreciate you to reach out and let me know if you're going to be able to be there so we can post it appropriately. Secondly, uh, there are some significant issues and structural failures with the slide tower at the recreation center pool, which have caused the closure of not only the slide, but the lazy river since it goes underneath the slide. The structural engineer, or a structural engineer has been consulted, and the damage is being assessed. To date, the reopening of lazy river is unknown. We recently spoke to the, um, the, the engineer, and was just, it was reaffirmed that they do not recommend that we open that lazy river right now, so we need to, uh, keep that closed right now for safety concerns. Next, the Cortez Library Summer Reading Kickoff Party took place this evening. Uh, we were all in this off building with the workshop session. However, um, I heard a report from Wendy Mimbiaga, who told me it was very well-attended and an excellent, um, event this evening. We are very proud of our library staff, and, uh, Beth Ford, and she's not here, I guess, but for what she's doing, I mean, we are really upping our numbers and really upping our game at that library, and very proud of her and her team. Lastly, um, and we've already talked about this, and I don't want to, uh, undo what's already been done, but I just want to appropriately and affectionately thank Linda Smith for submit, um, for her thirty-three years here at the City of Cortez, and twenty-nine years as our city clerk. Linda, I am sincerely going to miss you, and thanks for what you've done, and I really hope you enjoy your well-earned retirement, and, you know, Rick does need some adult supervision, and it's time for you to be there, so. But thank you, Linda, and we already had a big round of applause for you, but, you know, we have a card here for you from the council, and also we have some refreshments in the other room for afterwards for you and all our guests, so thank you, Linda. That concludes my report, council.
Okay. For those who don't know Linda well, she takes such good care of us. She is the mom to us, and a, just a good role model, and just cares so deeply about everyone, and I'm just so thankful to have known you for so many years and be part of your life, so thank you.
I just want to say it was the best job I could ever have asked for. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to eleven on the agenda, city council committee reports. Eleven A is the mayor's report on the workshop. Uh, we had a presentation from the CEO of Southwest Health Group, is that what the hospital, Health System, Joe Thine. Um, he gave us an update on how the hospital's doing, uh, the twenty-twenty-four metrics, and what twenty-twenty-five is looking. The hospital seems to be on an upward trend, doing well, um, and I highly recommend that the community go and watch our workshop to, to get the details of the presentation we got from, um, Mr. Thine. And then we had our executive session for our annual review of our city attorney. All right, so then we'll move on to eleven B is other board reports. We want to start on that end? Lydia, or Dehaven?
The historic preservation, um, meeting happened on third of July. Um, there's a couple of things are going to be addressing, one's going to be trying to work together to coordinate with the, uh, updated land use code to get things talking to each other in an appropriate language, I guess that they both talk in. And, um, they reviewed an application for a property, a second property for historic designation, which is kind of exciting, because this is a second, only two in a month, and that'll be coming before us soon. That's about it. A fun note is the fact that the Native American Dancing is going to be starting soon at the Cortez Cultural Center, and I'm, those are the highlights. Great.
Uh, yeah, the Parks Recreation Forestry Advisory Board meeting was on June fifth, and we discussed several things. We are, um, most of our time is actually spent on twenty-twenty-five event planning, so Asia Lynn Hager, um, gave an extensive overview of all the different summer events, including, um, the events in the park, like Third Thursday. Um, we talked very briefly about recruiting a youth member, and that was my, uh, job. I, I got there a little bit too late, school was almost out, so in August, we're going to, uh, go back and try to get somebody from Southwest Open School, or from the high school, um, to attend our meetings and, um, see how that goes. And then we, um, talked about some of the summer aquatic, uh, plans as well. Um, Arbor Day was a huge success, there were ninety-one students. I believe Kemper and the Kiva School is where most of those students came from, um, and there were some celebrities there, Smokey the Bear. Crow Canyon had some speakers, and Roman Alexander gave a talk about planting trees, so, um, it's good to hear that was a great event.
Great. Um, and then I attended the, um, public, or the arts committee meeting on last week Monday. So we, uh, elected a vice chair, we do have a vacancy on that board if anyone is interested in the arts committee. Um, we talked about First Friday, so the, that's a kind of a promotion of arts and businesses, and so that's, um, occurring the First Friday of every month. There's specific events, um, at each business that's participating, and that was also the first night of the, uh, Movie in the Park. Um, so I encourage anyone who is interested in information on that to follow CRIA, the Cortez Retail Enhancement Association, they're very good at, um, providing details and promoting that event. Um, and then we, uh, discussed the, so, you know, uh, we had a logo competition, um, so this meeting was before the, um, committee got together to evaluate and judge the logos that were submitted for the Colorado Hundred-and-Fifty Year, the USA Two-Hundred-and-Fifty Year, and Cortez's Hundred-and-Forty Year Celebration, which will occur in twenty-twenty-six. Uh, and then we discussed staffing for Third Thursdays, which are starting this month. Actually, next week is the first Third Thursday of the, um, summer. Um, that'll be on June nineteenth, um, in Monizuma Park. Uh, and then we just gave, uh, updates from, uh, particular board members on any arts-related events happening in the community. All right, so then we'll move on to other items of business. Number twelve, we have none, so thirteen is our second public participation, there's no limit to the number of speakers, and no overall time limit. Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak? All right, go ahead. Uh, inviting Mike Levy to the microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
During the discussion on the moratorium on marijuana, um, the term "natural medicine" came up, and just a few minutes ago, uh, Drew Sanders mentioned "natural medicine", and, um, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to. If you could clarify the term, uh, "natural medicine" in this context? If you could clarify the term "natural medicine" in this context?
Yes, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Levy, yes, the, the, there was a voter initiative allowing natural medicine, which is psilocybin essentially, to, can be used at healing facilities in communities, and also allows it to be administered by certain persons at the home level. We have the ability as a municipality, and like most in Colorado, to regulate time, place, and manner restrictions on that, but to do that is not just that easy, and we need to discuss, that's why the workshop sessions are there. The public is absolutely invited to those, to come in and, and comment.
Okay. I was, I guess I'm out of the loop, so I wasn't aware. Thank you for the clarification, appreciate it.
It's commonly referred to as magic mushrooms. Okay, it's kind of a layperson's term.
I've, I've heard that term. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and just for the public's awareness, we're, we do currently have a moratorium for that, as we establish the rules around the natural medicine centers, and we will have public meetings where we're gonna get input from the community. Okay, so then we'll...
Madam Mayor, I wonder if we should mention the fact that we are not having a meeting two weeks from now?
Yes, thank you, Matt. So we have canceled our second meeting in June, because four council members and several staff members will be attending the Colorado Municipal League Conference in Breckenridge in two weeks. Great timing here to be there, so looking forward to connecting with our fellow municipalities across the state, attending great sessions, and then also just enjoying the mountains. So, okay, great, thank you for that reminder. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Kefaufer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
E. Haven?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. Thank you all, and don't forget, we've got refreshments in the training room before you go.